Monday, November the sixteenth, November the sixth, two thousand seventeen session of Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Lansing.
Here.
Alderman Bydler.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Alderman Rommel.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg is absent. Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First order of business is a real treat. Introduce Police Chief Carl Waldorf with regard to swearing in a new police officer.
Well, good evening. While he walks up, I'll tell you a little bit about our new officer, Steven Sheets. He comes to us after prior service with the Spring Grove Police Department. And as a sergeant with the United States Army Reserve, he started with us last month, and we're very happy to have him. He's joined tonight by his mother, father, niece, and his sister Jenny. We'll be pinning him after you swear him in.
Okay, terrific. I'll raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Steven Sheets.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the constitutions of the United States and the State of Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the constitutions of the United States and the State of Illinois.
And will diligently enforce the laws of the State of Illinois.
And will diligently enforce the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the City of Lake Forest.
And the City of Lake Forest.
And that I will faithfully execute the duties of a police officer.
And that I will faithfully execute the duties of a police officer.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
Before you go, wait a minute.
Oh, one door. Okay. Can you pass that?
Sure. I can give you some.
Yeah, two would like some. One.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one other comment to make as mayor. As most, if not all, of you are aware, for more than -- if the police want to move on to having your evening celebration, please go ahead. It's up to you. As most of you are aware, for more than twenty years, Lake Forest City Government has been seeking improved passenger service of West Lake Forest in the form of increased metro service, especially on weekday afternoons, and also for West Lake Forest to become a fourth stop on the Amtrak daily Hiawatha service and the first and only stop in Lake County between Chicago and Milwaukee. While measured in millimeters at times over the last twenty years, tangible progress has been made in the form of support from the relevant local, state, and federal agencies, such that these agencies and the city are beginning the grant-seeking phase at this time for the funds for a pedestrian underpass and the universal crossover switch, which are Amtrak and Metro requirements. As part of all this work, within the past few days, the city received a market ridership demand study for the West Lake Forest Amtrak passenger rail service from Dr. Joseph Schweiterman of DePaul University that identifies a substantial demand for passenger service to and from Lake Forest as part of this intercity rail service. In fact, the demand is a lot more than we expected. This study will be on the city website tomorrow and in a new section on our website specifically to hold the information and documents pertaining to the West Lake Forest Amtrak passenger service endeavor of the city. Alderman, you've got just in front of you, we received this, as I say, just a few days ago in its final form, and it's quite a compelling set of numbers in the way that the methodology of these studies are done by the passenger rail industry that Amtrak likes to see and so forth. With that, I will turn to the city manager for his comments this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. I have actually two reports this evening. The first report is a community spotlight on a wonderful program that we have in our community, Kinder Haven. And to present that presentation this evening is Sally Swarthout, our Director of Parks and Recreation. And then also with her is Dr. Penny Robbins, who's the Director of Kinder Haven.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. I just want to give you some background on our Kinder Haven Preschool Academy. Kinder Haven was established in the early nineteen seventies by the Parks and Recreation Board because it recognized the need to provide a preschool programming for children residing in our area. The very first program director brought a Montessori influence to the school, which continued until the late nineteen eighties. Kinder Haven Preschool Academy has since evolved into the current developmentally appropriate Reggio-inspired program, which emphasizes hands-on, experiential learning, and the growth of the whole child. Most recently, Kinder Haven has been influenced by the excellent preschools in Reggio Emilia Italy. As we are growing, our classrooms portray a more comfortable, less institutional atmosphere that welcomes children and their families into the classrooms. Teachers are continually involved with the children in many different ways, through guidance, asking thought-provoking questions, direct teaching, researching with the children, observing the children, and documenting projects that the children are creating. And to give you a little bit further view into the Kinder Haven experience, I'd like to welcome Dr. Penny Robbins to the podium.
I want to thank everyone for inviting us here tonight. It just gives us a chance to talk about our school, which we absolutely love. So, thank you to the mayor and to all of the Aldermen. I want to introduce our parent board president, Sarah Lackhart, who's been our president for a very long time, and to one of our dedicated teachers, Lisa Moulton, who has been with us for a few years now, who just finished her master's degree, so we're very excited about that, too. As Sally said, that we've been around since the nineteen seventies, but we've really transitioned to the Reggio curriculum just within the past eleven years. And that is an inspiration from Reggio Emilia, Italy, which is a small town in Italy, and their philosophy was driven by the fact that they believed very much that children should direct their own learning and be a part of that, and the teachers are co-researchers along with them. So, that's kind of where we've gone with that educational philosophy. Our environment is also very important, so our classroom is set up so that it isn't conducive to having children really question and thrive and learn about their curiosities in ways that we set up for them to learn. Our school is based on three basic principles. One is the Reggio philosophy. The other is that we believe art is an important language of children, so we have a strong emphasis on art. And the other thing that we have an emphasis on is our compassion projects, which you saw some of those there. But they're also community-based. And because we're the city's preschool, and we take a great pride in being part of the city of Lake Forest, our compassion projects are often involved, involve a lot of the people in the city. So, you'll see that some of our projects have involved working with veterans groups, working with auxiliary groups. We've had opportunities to work with L.L. Farms and Wildlife Discovery Center, and we try a lot to connect with those different groups in our community. Also, because our learning is directed by the children, we're never sure exactly what they're going to be learning or how they're going to be doing it, so we also connect with our merchants in the community. So, for instance, one year, our youngest kids are two-and-a-half to three-and-a-half year olds were interested in shoes and how different types of shoes work. So, we hooked up with Lake Forest Bootery, and they came in and spent some time with the kids, measuring their feet, learning what different types of shoes were, and they also invited the children to come to the store with their parents. And so, you know, it was a really beneficial experience for us. We also do a lot of things with the police and fire department. You saw a dog up there. We also do a lot of things with different animal shelters. One of the coolest things we ever did was to raise money to, for a surgery for a little Chihuahua that had its leg unfortunately cut off, and the children were very interested in helping this Chihuahua, and they knew it had to have surgery. So, they opened their own pet store, where after two months of making pet treats and all kinds of stuff for pets, they opened their own pet store in the rec center and invited everyone in the community, and they were able to pay for that little Chihuahua surgery and have money left over to sponsor some animals at the Wildlife Discovery Center. So, we try very hard to connect with this wonderful community that we're a part of. The other thing that I really wanted to talk about was the trip to Italy, which was such a fantastic, wonderful opportunity for us. Because we are a Reggio school, it's difficult to get training, and so we have to go a distance to receive the type of training that we need. So, our parent board, which raises a lot of additional funding for our school, has been, had been saving for years to send us to Italy as soon as we got the opportunity. And so, through the Erickson Institute in Chicago, we were able to hook up with them, and four of us were able to go to Italy this last March and actually do an intensive study as part of the community. So, we learned more about community building and working with a community and how to get them involved also in the children's education. Our staff is very dedicated, so we've gone to places in Colorado, Michigan, Minnesota, Indiana. We go all over the place to try to find the types of education that we want, so that we can bring back that to our school. It was a dream come true, and we hope that we can do it again at some point. And I know the parent board wants to send us again because we did come back so excited and so ready for this school year. I think the one thing I want to talk about now, as we dreamed going forward, is the fact that we are at our maximum in our school, and we have been for the last several years. So, we continue to add classes to try to utilize the small space that we're in, but we have waiting lists every year. And for the past five or six years, we've had enough to fill two schools, but not enough room. So, as we're looking forward, we're looking as to what's our next step? Where can we go and how can we continue to grow? The Reggio philosophy of early childhood is one of the top three philosophies in the world right now for early childhood education, and we are the primary school for that in this area. So, we do have some people that are wanting to come, too, from other areas to be a part of this fantastic environment that I think we have. So, as we look at our space issues and we talk about where we want to grow, we also are adding classes for kids who have been out of Kinder Haven for a while. So, we have a group that's called Look for the Helpers that we just started up using a phrase from Mr. Rogers, that we always, in times of crisis, look for the helpers. So, this group of kids have come through Kinder Haven, and now they're wanting to continue work in the community and doing good work. So, I was just saying, I might have some sparkles on me. I was just working with kids and making cards for a boy who is sick, and all he wants is Christmas cards. So, these kids decided they wanted to send a massive amount of Christmas cards. So, we were doing that right before we came. So, we also do art programs for kids who have gone through our school. We've been a part of the Emerging Artist Group here in town, too, which has been fantastic for our preschoolers to have their art, you know, hung with the big kids, as they say. So, I think all in all, we're ready. We're, you know, we're ready to continue to grow and to continue to represent the city of Lake Forest in the most positive ways that we possibly can. So, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Robbins?
You say you're at your maximum. How many children is that?
We have sixteen children at maximum in the two-to-three-year-old class and twenty from the three-to-four and the four-to-five, twenty in each of those classes.
Yeah.
I just want to say, Kinder Haven, in my opinion, has always been a quality preschool. Both of my children went through Kinder Haven when Ruth Price was the director and founder, and I'm so glad to see that it is still vibrant and alive, and congratulations and on it being such an innovative program as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm thinking that, I love the video, I love learning about this. I did not know, I knew Kinder Haven was there, I did not know you were a Reggio school, and I think that's terrific, very exciting, and definitely a message we want to get out. And Sally and I were talking earlier, I'm hoping with our Welcome Home Campaign, which we're targeting very specifically to families that might be looking to move from elsewhere to be starting their Lake Forest lives, maybe with a child or two, this will be very interesting. So, we'll want to be sure, Susan, let's just be sure that in our links, I think probably Kinder Haven is there, where, and our, just so everybody knows, all of our main tool that we've crafted now, that I think we demonstrated here a bit ago, is on the city's website. And there's a Welcome Home section on the front page, isn't there, Susan? So, in the schools, the range of schools in Lake Forest is one of the most important things we think we have to offer here. And I'm sure there's a link to Kinder Haven, I don't have it in front of me right now, but we're going to want to get that video up. So, let's figure out how to do that and be sure, because I think that's going to be, you know, that's going to be a powerful piece of our video tool, but it's great, great, great.
We do get a lot of families that have just moved in from the city in particular, so it's always exciting for us to have those opportunities to have them come visit the school.
Okay, good.
So, we'd invite you all to come visit, too, sometime.
Be sure we promote that. Do you have any ideas of where you might expand?
Well, I think, you know, we've talked about whether we expand where we are, like, and look at that, or whether we find another, you know, place in Lake Forest that's available. So, we've kind of kicked around, I think, those ideas, but I think we're really getting serious about what we're going to do, because we don't want to lose people, and we do every year, because if they're on the wait list, they're usually going somewhere else, you know, after a period of time, so.
So, it's that early class, it's, so you need to get them in at the front end?
Preferably, yes. And we're also looking to expand, because we're trying to meet the needs of also, you know, the citizens of Lake Forest, and one of the needs that we're seeing trending is full-time school for preschool. And so, in order, again, for us to move in that direction, we're going to need the space to have all-day classes, because right now, we share space, all three classes share one space, and then our multiple-age class has to set up and tear down in a dance studio every day. So, you know, we're looking at what we can do to provide that.
I think your space is smaller than even it used to be.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next presentation is not going to be as interesting, I think, as the one you just heard, but it's one that's very timely, with the weather starting to turn on us, and it's one that we don't look forward to each year, but it's Public Works 101 and a focus both on how we did this past summer in terms of pumping water, but also what we've got on store for snow, which is right around the corner. So, Michael?
Great, thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. This evening, as Bob noted, we're going to present a review of not only our water and our water plant and our pumpage, but our snow program. I assume 101 means the precursor to 102 and 103. Garbage, sewers.
Our pencils are poised.
Buildings, trucks. Kathy was much better at creating a title than I was, so we're simply going to call this, as Kathy noted, hers was Year of the Crane. We're simply going to call this What You Drink and What We Plow, to really get to the meat of it. For water usage, the green chart represents, or the green line, I should say, represents our maximum daily pumpage over the past ten years. The red line is the IDNR regulation that we cannot go over. So, if we pump 1.4 billion a year, they divide it by 365, and they say you can pump four million, four-and-a-half million gallons a day. The blue line actually represents what our average pumpage is. So, the bottom line is, is that we don't want to, with that blue line, go above the red line. You can see somewhat of that decreasing trend. I think that is due in part to some of the conservation efforts we had, especially the sprinkler-free Monday, and bringing more awareness to the community about when is the appropriate time to water and when it is not. But again, the green showing our maximum in that calendar year, the highest pumpage amount, the red, what we have to stay under per IDNR regulations, and then the blue is actually what our average pumpage for that year per day actually is. So, we're doing, we're doing well. Rainfall totals, obviously, the more rain we receive, the less water we sell. If you look at 2012, when we only had 22 inches, that was one of our most challenging years, where we had a very difficult time getting enough water out of the plant. But then you can see in recent years, where we're having approximately 33 to, well, 29 to 33 inches of water. Rainfall per year, we don't sell as much water, so obviously, there's a direct correlation. We will go from two to three million gallons a day in January and February upwards to 11 million gallons a day in July and August. So, that delta, majority of that delta is due to irrigation. Obviously, some people return from town, from being out of town, so in April, we'll jump up to about four to five million. But again, that larger delta is for irrigation systems. Not the best for the environment. On the other hand, it's what funds the water fund. So, water plant, storm, sanitary sewers, water mains, it all comes from us selling water. We received this data from Community Development. We just thought it'd be interesting to put up a chart showing how many sprinkler permits, irrigation permits. Obviously, in the early 2000s, we had a good number of them, but they continue, obviously, to come in, and in the drought years, we will see more requests, but they have begun to somewhat dwindle, but we still, obviously, Community Development is still issuing those with no reservations. The water plant, water plant project, water plant project is actually going very well. We've got an excellent contractor, J.J. Henderson. They were the ones that built the plant for us in 2002 and put it into service in 2004. So far, we have our old filter basins on the east side of the building that have been taken out. We've installed chemical containment areas, so the phosphate, fluoride, all those chemicals, we've put them in containment areas. We've done similar things on the third floor as well. Our CIP is our clean-in-place containment areas. The lower membrane room, we've begun to take equipment out and replace with tanks, blowers, and the new backwash system. And then, obviously, we're starting now, we started, I want to say it was the second week of October, beginning to remove the skids. So, we have eight skids at the water plant. We have taken two of those out of service. All of our skid material, all the membrane modules for the new plant are on site. So, one of the great things that J.J. Henderson did as soon as his contract was signed, they ordered all the equipment. You can't find a corner down at that water plant where equipment isn't being stored and staged, which is, in our world, it's wonderful. It's all there, it's ready to go. Upcoming work, our motor control centers, the brains behind the membrane system, that will be installed soon, the clean-in-place system, the piping that goes to the storage tank. We're going to continue, obviously, with some of the air systems to be installed, and then we have some chemical facilities on the third floor that will be installed here in the next couple of weeks. Plan for January of 2018, we hope to have our clean-in-place system installed, our backwash pump station installed, and the first two of six skids installed up for production. So, what we've been doing since this project began is to basically get all those systems that make this system work, all the computers and the air compressors and the pumps, and get all that stuff installed. get all that stuff installed. By May, we hope to have our second pair of skids, so we'll have four of the six. We'll continue, obviously, with work throughout the summer into the fall, and then, starting next October, we will go ahead and install the last two skids. So, everything is on time. Actually, there's been moments throughout the summer where they've been a week or two ahead of schedule. We've had absolutely no problems, so the project is going very, 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 very well. Our good old snow plan. Our overall approach, obviously, is we want to meet the resident expectations. We have a budget that is adopted by City Council each year. We have funds allocated, not only for personnel, but for fuel, for repairs, for salt, for contractual services. We need to stay and work within those numbers. And then, maintain employee morale, which come February, if we have a heavy winter, it begins to get a little challenging. The guys are getting a little tired of coming in at night and coming in on the weekends. So, that's an important part of it, because we move guys around, they're trained on every aspect of our snow plan, just to try and keep things somewhat fresh. Obviously, it's a team effort. All of our Public Works operating sections, including engineering, the engineering inspectors plow, all of our parks and forestry and cemetery, full-time and seasonal, from the Parks and Rec Department, they're part of this program. If things really become tight, where we don't have a good number of seasonals, or we're having back-to-back storms, we actually work with Community Development, and their building inspectors will hop in some of the trucks and do the parking lots for us as well. Interesting, our city policy allows us to utilize our guys up to 16 hours. They obviously get breaks. We try to do our best to get them out around 12 or 13, and it's not at the best times. We will, for example, try and get them out at 3:00, 3:30 in the afternoon, and then bring them back at midnight or earlier to start our hauling. Preseason work, all of our salt, we are, the two bays are full. We have 2,400 tons on-site. We received that salt late May. Fleet maintenance is almost done, going through all the equipment. We're almost completed going through all of our various training sessions with the guys, obviously, a policy review. Forestry will start the sidewalk trimming process in a couple of weeks. They've got some tree planting they need to complete soon, and then they'll start the trimming. We have train platform training that we actually have to work with Union Pacific and Metro on. That will be happening in two weeks for both of the train stations. We'll solicit proposals from private trucking firms to help us haul snow out of the CBD and the parking lots, and then any of the business owners uptown that don't want to handle their own snow in their own parking lots, we have agreements with them where they pay us, and we will haul that snow out for them. Snow removal, the priorities, and this is important to understand how we progress through a storm. The bottom line is, we are going to get it. We will remove it, we will take care of it. But we obviously start with all city streets. We then will move to the parking lots and the railroad station platforms. Those two, the first two items, are usually done at the same time. As soon as we can, we will get some guys out on the sidewalks, and we power broom half of the sidewalks, meaning we'll remove the snow down to the concrete. So, you will have concrete sidewalks on the path uptown, adjacent to the McKinley Bike Path between Illinois and Westminster, all the sidewalks on the main roads, Everett Telegraph, Green Bay, Old Elm, and then sidewalks that are within a quarter mile of the school. So, we power broom those. But we've got to get out as quickly as can, so the snow doesn't build up. The equipment will handle the two, three, four inches of snow. We can't put a broom out there when there's 10 inches. The equipment just won't work. From there, all the remaining sidewalks, we'll go ahead and plow. Some of this will then move and make sure all the CBD intersections, Deer Path, Westminster, all those intersections are hauled and cleared out. We'll get onto the bridge decks and get those done. Compost Center is used daily by our sanitation guys. Obviously, on the weekend, it's open to residents, so we've got to get that plowed out so we can get our trucks in. That is actually where we take all of our snow. Doesn't matter where, if it's a parking lot, CBD, cul-de-sacs that have to get hauled out, street corners, all of it ends up out at the compost center. So, we've got to prepare that. West Park Ice Pond, we hear from people that are obviously interested in skating. We've got to get out there and get that cleared as well. Then we will jump to hauling from the parking lots and uptown. Majority of that is done in the overnight hours. Sometimes we'll sneak some in during the day. Those priorities, obviously, can be changed depending upon the weather conditions, our equipment, et cetera. Next slide is one of the pieces of equipment that we use uptown. This actually was across from Einstein's. That's us loading snow. So, we'll actually take snow, we'll push it in the middle of the street. It started about 10 o'clock at night, and we come with an army of guys and equipment and get everything into the street, and then we load the snow, and we obviously will obey all traffic laws, but we really need to get out to that compost center, dump, and get back. So, that's one of the things we do in the overnight hours. Salt, very quickly, the salt bay was expanded in 2015. When we moved in in 2009, we had the capacity to hold 1,600 tons. We went ahead and expanded that. We reinforced the walls, so now we can store 2,400 tons. Before the snow begins, we have 83% of what we typically use on hand, ready to go. We obviously then can purchase salt when the timing is good. For example, all the municipalities are now looking to have their salt delivered. Private contractors are still hauling gravel and sand for construction projects, so a lot of municipalities are waiting for this stuff to be delivered. We already have ours, and it's, that salt bay expansion has been wonderful, that we can essentially hedge, and we can find when the price is good and when it's the cheapest to have the trucking haul it in, and we find that typically to be in the springtime. We obviously also participate, and City Council's approved, us partaking in Lake County's bid for salt purchases. So, we have 2,400 on-site. City Council in the spring approved additional purchase of 1,000 tons. So, if we have a bad winter, as we empty one of those bays, we'll call this 1,000 tons in, so we have it, as we're starting to work on the second bay, the other 1,200. If we do not use it, that will be the first salt that we will be obligated to purchase in the springtime. So, it's an agreement that we've signed with Lake County. The salting policy. So, City Council approved the salting policy on March 16th of 2015, a revised policy that essentially breaks everything down into two periods. December 1st through January 15th, we have the holiday season, majority of the residents are in town, we salt everything. We salt all streets, parking lots, et cetera. Beginning January 16th through March 30th, obviously, the post-holiday season, we begin to see residents leave town. We actually will reduce our usage of salt, and we will go down to 50%, of what we typically use. We use about 110 tons a storm. But that will go on the main roads, we'll still salt Green Bay and Everett and Wesley, but on side streets, we're only going to do the hills, curves, and intersections. So, if we think of Forest Hill and London, Forest Hill, London at the intersection, that will get salt. The rest of it won't. Obviously, the flexibility is given to the snow commander to modify. If we need to increase our rate, then we do so. Our history of our salt usage, as you can see, we've begun to trend down with the new policy that was implemented. We use approximately 300 pounds per lane mile. So, we have computers in our trucks, and depending upon the snow, although a majority of the time, we're running at rate three, which is 300 pounds. If you can vision Wesley and Route 41, and you're heading east on Wesley, and you're going to go up just past Green Bay, that's one mile. One mile, we drop three of these. So, when we calibrate our salt spreaders, which we're just going to start next week, we actually weigh this, and this weighs 100 pounds full of salt. So, we really do not use a whole lot of salt. That entire distance, just one lane, will get 300 pounds. We'll get three of these. So, we do our best to conserve. It costs a lot of money. It's not good for the environment. So, we're always constantly trying to watch the condition of the roads, and if more is needed, fine, we can put more down. There are other towns, Waukegan and Highwood especially, that will put 800, 900 pounds per lane mile. So, when we hear the comments, gosh, Highwood and Waukegan are running water, well, there's a reason they're running water. They're using a whole lot of salt, they're spending a lot of money on it, and City Council in the past has directed us to back off. History of our full-time and seasonal personnel. The green line shows the total, beginning back, this is simply a history from 2000. The blue line is our full-time, and the red line is the seasonal. We, in the Department of Public Works, Parks and Forestry and Cemetery, have gone down in personnel, like all the departments have, we've reduced, and it has been a challenge to do so. As we noted back in March at the budget meeting, our seasonal personnel used to be 11 months. Now, they're nine months, and those nine months are not the winter months. We'll be losing, Parks and Forestry especially, will be losing their seasonals here in the next couple of weeks. So, that number 94 actually is total, and that represents typically when we're at full staff with all the seasonal personnel, so. But the question then becomes, so, we've reduced significantly, and we provide these services, how do we do it? We have what's referred to as a snowbird program, where we contract with a company. They then look for personnel and people from different municipalities that have retired, that have worked in Public Works, and we contract with this company that when we need drivers, we bring drivers in. Very lucky to have it, we'll have two or three guys that are able to make each snowstorm, but it's how we supplement versus having someone here full-time. Night shift, one of the things our guys agreed to, which we're very thankful, is that they work in the overnight hours, straight time. We will have somebody here, once we get a good snowstorm and we need to start hauling, we'll have someone here, starting at midnight, for the entire winter season. We typically will have two hours during the evening, 10:00 p.m. to midnight, when we don't have anybody here. Our garbage guys, when they get off the route at about 4:00, coming back from the landfill, they'll take a quick break, they'll run the routes for us till about 10:00, 10:30. They've got to get back home, get some sleep, because they're picking up garbage the next day. So, for that two-hour period, we won't have anyone here. Starting at midnight, we bring two guys in, they're working straight time till late in the morning, hauling. Every guy in the sections takes five days throughout the winter, so. Great bunch of guys agreed to do that, and we're very thankful of that. We contract out some of the hand shoveling. As I noted, the seasonal personnel have gone down significantly, almost, we only have a few left in the winter. So, we contract with an asphalt firm that comes in and will hand shovel some of the higher-used areas, City Hall, Rec Center, Gorton, to make sure that during a storm and after the storm, those areas are constantly addressed. And then the final thing is, we have a no-cost agreement with a private excavating firm, a local firm, that City Council approved two years ago, and they actually will haul snow for us in the evening, and then, when we bring it out to the compost center, they actually stack it for us. They have a large bulldozer, equipment that we don't have, and it needs to be stacked and piled and get us ready for the next snowstorm. So, it's a no-cost agreement, because in the end, they get to store their equipment at the compost center, and they've got a concrete crushing part, that they'll actually take concrete, crush it into CA6 stone that we can use, and they use as well. But no money is exchanged. So, it's just another creative idea to say, how are we going to get all this stuff done when we've lost a number of guys? The big thing in the end is, we've got more efficient equipment than what we had 20 years ago, and we've got a great, great set of guys. And this was a couple of years ago, after a storm at the end of January, it took us a week to clean up the whole town and haul all the cul-de-sacs, but that's, that was one of the pictures we took. So, very proud of the guys. I'll entertain any questions you might have on water or snow.
Questions? Mike?
So, where does, where do you put the snow? Is it out at the Municipal Services Center?
For a long time, when we had moved out, well, since 2009, until the city sold the property, it went to the Municipal Services, which was great, because it was a very quick turnaround. When we had all our trucks lined up and just buzzing down to Laurel and back, it was very quick. Now, it has to go out to the compost center. So, we've got to deal with the stoplights at Waukegan and 60. It slows us down, so that's why we want to bring in some contractual semis, because we don't want the loaders waiting for trucks. We've got to have enough to get a cycle going, so.
I think you've done a wonderful, innovative job of holding down costs in some fabulous ways. My question is, and I'm sure that you've thought about this, are there other things that we can use other than salt? Like, isn't there beet extract or something?
Yeah, there's beet juice. What is interesting, there's beet juice, and there's, which, the beet juice actually is used to put on with the salt, or potentially as an application beforehand. The sugar content of the beet juice has to be just right, if not, it'll freeze over. What we do with ours is, we'll actually have saltwater on the saddle tanks of our plow trucks. So, as that salt is being dropped, it gets sprayed with saltwater. That actually starts the salt work to work, as well as it adds weight to the salt kernels, so the salt doesn't bounce into the parkway. We'll do that until temperatures get to be about 15 degrees. When they're about 15, we've got to switch over to calcium chloride. The saltwater won't work. In fact, it'll begin to work against us, it'll freeze. So, calcium chloride, usually at the end of December, early January, we switch everything over and run with that. And that's why you'll see, late January, when it's 10 below zero, you'll see running water in the streets. It's because the calcium chloride is working with the salt.
So, the beet juice isn't an option, you don't think?
We would have to invest a good amount of money to set up, to have enough, to have a containment system, to have something that can store all that, and then the equipment to spread all that, to have spray units out. We can look into it. I just think, right now, it's tight.
And is there any possibility of, on some of those side streets, putting down cinders of some sort to, you know, help them, since they're not being plowed, some of those side streets from that?
Well, all of the streets, all the streets will be plowed. Yeah, all of the streets will be plowed. One of the things that was discussed in the past was potentially using sand, which we, towns up north will use sand, primarily Minnesota, Wisconsin, because they have the lakes. They don't want the salt in the lakes, and they spend a good amount of time in the spring recovering that sand. We don't want the sand in our catch basins and our storm sewers. Come March, those things, when it's, snow's melting and it's raining out, those catch basins have got to be free and open.
That makes sense, most of those places.
But as far as the cinders, storing the material and having that material on-site, we would again have to find another area to store that, and I'm not sure, it may give some traction. It won't get us down to the pavement, though, but it's something we can look into.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of environmentally friendly ways of tackling this. I think you've been very conscious of how much salt you use.
Reducing the salt usage has been, has been very significant, and it's saved the city money, and it's been good for the environment.
Thanks.
Michael, thank you. And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kiley. Next agenda item is comments by council members, led off by the Audit Committee report for fiscal year 2017, to be presented by Don O'Callahan, Audit Committee Chairman of the City, who is retiring in November. Say it ain't so, Don.
I am.
After many years on the job.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, chair of some of the activities of the committee over the past year. And let me start by saying, just in terms of the committee itself, we have seven members on our committee. In addition to myself, there's Andy Logan, Bill McFadden, Finn Sparrow, Dean Steber, the mayor, and Finance Committee Chair Morris as well, so we have a good committee. Consistent with prior years, we meet four times a year, every January, April, July, and October. And over the years, really, there's two primary charges that the Audit Committee has, that the council and the mayor has given us, and first of all, number one would be to provide oversight in connection with the city's annual audit process. And then, second is to review the financial statements of the various foundations associated or affiliated with the city. Currently, there's seven foundations. They include the senior- They include the Senior Foundation, Croya, Police, Elawa, Parks and Rec, Ragdale and Gorton. So every year, we do meet with each of these foundations, review their financial statements. We have a standing calendar to ensure that these reviews continue on an annual basis, and, and they've been, I think, effective and informative, and I think both sides have benefited from that process. The city's fiscal 2017 audit was recently completed, I know everyone's aware of that. The Audit Committee did meet with staff and the external auditors from Baker Tilly to discuss the results of the audit and review the city's comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFR. That meeting took place in October. One noteworthy item this year in connection with the audit, as a result of the renovations at the CBD train station, those are paid for in part by federal grants, so we tripped the $750,000 threshold, and it just meant we had to have Baker Tilly do some additional grant audit procedures in accordance with federal guidelines and issue some additional reports on the federal awards. As far as the audit, the results of the audit itself, certainly all positive. The, the auditors rendered an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. The city's accounting and financial reporting meets all relevant requirements. In addition, the auditors had no internal control matters to bring to our attention. That's good news. They didn't note any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls. Certainly, that's what we would expect, and that's been consistent for a number of years now, but it's still a very positive outcome. And also, with respect to the grant audit procedures that I, I mentioned earlier, there were no findings or question cost identified in connection with those procedures. So, again, they, they performed specific tests on the, on the actual expenditures themselves and had no findings or question cost in connection with that. As far as the financial statements themselves, they're in the CAFR, it's, I know it was, it's on our, it will be posted to our website, I know it was part of the agenda package, it's a comprehensive document. I'll just touch on a very few highlights. The government-wide financial statements, that's what I refer to, is kind of our consolidated or aggregated picture of all city activities. Those are on pages seventeen to nineteen, and they're based on the accrual basis of accounting. And the net position, which is, is really kind of the net assets of the city on a consolidated basis, actually declined about $5.2 million in fiscal seventeen, from 227.4 million to 222.2 million. And it's about a 2.3% decrease, and it's due to a couple of items, some, what I'll call year-end adjustments to the pension obligations. A year ago, you'll recall, we put those, we were required under GASB reporting standards to put those obligations on the face of the financial statements. And so those are periodically adjusted. In addition, we had a temporary loss on the sale of assets and some non-capitalized improvements. The temporary loss on the sale of assets, a little bit unusual, but relates to the sale of the former municipal services facility, property. So it's a temporary loss, because at the end of the day, we're going to receive TIF proceeds, once those homes and apartments are constructed and come on the rolls and are assessed, and we'll ultimately receive the proceeds from TIF that will more than offset that temporary loss. In terms of net investment in capital assets, a component of our net position or net worth, it's the single biggest component, it's included in net position but not available for expenditures. It represents 94% of our total net position, and, and really what that is, is simply all of our investment in roads, bridges, water lines, sewers, et cetera. It aggregates 208 of that 222 million of net position. Other items of interest in the CAFR, the fund, the old traditional fund financial reporting, those statements are on pages twenty to twenty-three, that are reported on a modified accrual basis of accounting, segregated between major and non-major funds, the major funds being general, Parks and Rec and capital. And then if you get to page ninety, you'll see the budget information. A lot of people like to understand how we did budget to actual, the budgetary schedule start on page ninety. You'll see general fund balance reporting. The fund balance itself increased by about 5.8 million in fiscal seventeen, in large part due to receipt of one-time permit fees for the redevelopment of the municipal services site, that was about 2.4 million. But otherwise, revenues in total were up 0.7 million above budget, and expenditures were about 1.7 million less than budget, excluding our contingency. So, overall, I think a positive outcome. If you can't make it through the financial statements themselves, the management discussion analysis, and as well as the transmittal letter in the document, really well done by staff and provided excellent overview of the, of the city's finance reporting, financial reporting and activities for the past year. Page 158 in the document, statistical information, I've noted that in the past, just great trend line information going back a number of years of interest, and as I mentioned earlier, the financial statements themselves are available for review on the city's website. So in conclusion, the audit process, again, this year went very well. The results are positive, and I, I think, spink well for the city. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I again want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the city's finance department, under the leadership of Elizabeth Halleb, our Finance Director, and Diane Hall, her Assistant Finance Director. They do a great job, make our job a lot easier, so, many thanks to them. That really completes my formal remarks. As you mentioned earlier, I am retiring. I resigned from the committee, it's my last official act, but I've been involved with the committee for about four years now, and it's a good committee, and I think as a city, I think it was mentioned in the past, many cities, municipalities haven't adopted, haven't set up a formal Audit Committee. I think Lake Forest's a leader, and, you know, it's been, I think, a good experience, and I've enjoyed serving.
Well, again, Don, thank you very much for your service, and, and yes, in our Lake Forest way, it's not an Audit Committee of elected officials and politicians, per se, it's actually practicing professionals, leaders in, of accounting and finance firms. So, between our strong city staff and a citizen oversight such as yours, Don, our, our numbers are put together very well. Any questions, comments, thoughts from the council?
I have some questions, as the Finance Committee put together some remarks, but, you know, for some unthinkable reason, most of us avoid accountants like the plague, just after that report. But, on behalf of the council, I want to thank you and your members for serving on this really important committee, and I wanted to express our appreciation for that important role that your Audit Committee plays in, in protecting the community and ensuring the audit quality, which is very important in all of our financing. You know, we have a very complex governmental accounting system that the director is in charge of, and it's the Audit Committee that makes, makes sure that it all works in the end. So, your financial expertise, your experience is really critical to the community. And I just wanted to say, we appreciate the challenges that your committee has had in overseeing us. You know, we have a very complex financial reporting processes that, that we're in charge of, the challenging accounting issues that are constantly changing, and the occasional expansion of your oversight into these other areas that you hadn't anticipated. So, thank you very much, and enjoy your retirement.
You're welcome, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And in this vein, it seems that the Government Finance Officers Association of America has seen fit to bestow, for the second year in a row, a Distinguished Budget Presentation Award to the City of Lake Forest. Now I'd ask James Morris, Finance Committee Chair of the council, to present.
Mr. Mayor, can I just interrupt for one second? Before we jump into awards, can I ask the council to formally accept the audit report for the year? And then a second to accept?
Some of.
Just so that we have it on the record that it was accepted?
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Officially adopted?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, onward with the awards.
Very good. There are comments I'd like to read, from the award that we've received. And I'll just start with, the City of Lake Forest has been awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and that's for our fiscal year 2018 budget. This award was granted to the City of Lake Forest for the second consecutive year. The Distinguished Budget Presentation Award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, and its attainment is a significant accomplishment by a government entity and its management team. For budgets beginning in 2016, there are only 1,612 units of government that have received that award in the U.S. That is only 1.8% of over 89,000 units of government, pretty amazing, that have received this award. In addition to the Lake Forest Budget Award, a Certificate of Recognition for Budget Presentation is also presented by the GFOA to the individual designated as instrumental in their respective government unit's achievement of the award. So I'm pleased to present this award to Elizabeth Halleb, our Director of Finance and IT, for her efforts in coordinating the preparation of the annual budget, and for leading the efforts in making the required changes to the city's budget document to meet these stringent requirements of the GFOA's budget program. I was recently reading some research on municipal finances, if you can believe that, but I came across some comments I thought were really relevant, and they said that it's important to improve basic municipal finance capacity, ranging from accounting rules to capital investment plans, to financial sustainable, sustainability ratios, and to rules and policies for revenue and expenditures. Improving municipal finance management from top to bottom can have demonstrable benefits for a community. Understanding accounting principles, having capital investment plans, and setting up appropriate electronic governmental systems can have significant results. Support should also be given to ensuring that the accounting staff has the technical knowledge of our complex municipal financial instruments, including bonding, credit ratings, loans, and alternative financing. So from my perspective, that's exactly what Director Halleb and her staff are doing for us. So we are very appreciative of your effectiveness and the efficiency with what you do that, and the fact that the finance team has won this award. So, well done. So I think we get to take a picture.
Do we have the, there he is.
He's coming. Top 1.8 percenter. But not so fast, Elizabeth, don't sit down. Next item in business is the Tax Levy Estimate, Determination of Non-Binding Estimate of the Amount of Revenue to Be Generated from Property Taxes for the 2017 Calendar Year in accordance with the Truth in Taxation Statute and Establishment of a Public Hearing Date for the 2017 Levy if required. So, Elizabeth, back to work.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council Members. If I don't repeat this enough during my presentation, I know the mayor and the Finance Committee Chair is going to do it for me. The action taken this evening by the City Council is a preliminary estimate, and it is non-binding, but it does meet a legal requirement under state statutes. That doesn't work quite as we'd like it to with our schedule of meetings, because there will be detailed discussion on the property tax levy next Monday at your budget workshop, but we do the best we can to do this estimate to meet those truth in taxation requirements. So, as mentioned, the Truth in Taxation Statute, under Illinois compiled statutes, requires the City Council to determine a tax levy estimate 20 days prior to adoption of the tax levy. Again, it is preliminary and it is non-binding. The estimate may be increased or decreased, provided the tax levy is not 105% of the prior year's tax levy, without the required notice and public hearing. So this outlines the tax levy timeline for this year. As you'll recall, at the October Finance Committee meeting, we talked about the preliminary estimate and presented two optional tax levies to begin the conversation. This evening, the City Council has asked to approve the non-binding estimate of the tax levy and establish a hearing date if that hearing is required. Next Monday, the November 13 Finance Committee meeting will include a detailed discussion of the proposed tax levy, after which the city staff will be given direction in order to prepare the tax levy ordinance. And at the November 20 City Council meeting, the City Council will consider first reading of the tax levy ordinance. Following at the December 4 City Council meeting, there would be a public hearing, if it is required, and the council would approve, final approval of the tax levy ordinance in order to meet the filing requirement, which is the 4th Tuesday in December, which is our deadline for filing the approved tax levy ordinance with Lake County. This slide is actually aggregated, it's more detailed than is shown in the slide, but what I wanted to do here is just provide you some context on the different categories of the total city tax levy, and what those categories are, what the current estimate is, and what that change is from the prior year extended levy, and the percentage change from the prior year. As noted in the write-up, related to this item, we're currently making the most conservative estimate of the tax levy. In doing so, the assumption is made that the increased police and fire pension requirements would be completely funded on the tax levy, which may not be the case. As I noted, there will be detailed discussion of that on November 13, and then we can make the appropriate revisions for the tax levy ordinance. But you can see that there is a significant increase in both police and fire pension requirements for fiscal year 19 that would be funded in part by the 2017 tax levy. And so the estimate presented for consideration this evening, again, an estimate, preliminary and non-binding, is just under 31.6 million, an increase of 1.6 million over last year, and that's a 5.4% increase. We do expect this to go down, based on discussion next week, and as noted, this is simply the most conservative estimate. So I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So it would seem, from the chart on the right, that essentially you're, I guess, depending on one's measure of inflation, with the exception of the pension obligations from the state, and debt service, which has increased more than 2%, or, or 2 or 3% is, and that's really the addition of the water plant.
Right, the new issue from...
Funding that we, or bond issuance we had in...
Correct.
May, at 24 basis points over 20-year treasuries at that date, that it's pretty much inflation. This is a fairly tightly screwed-down budget, as we've been hearing and observing in the recent weeks and months. And yes, I think it's appropriate, as sort of heavy-handed as it appears, to look at the total, potential tax increase being funded for pensions, because as we sit, we may be within 48 hours of a property...
within 48 hours of a property tax freeze in the state to be voted in Springfield for Cook County and the Coller Counties, including all governmental entities in Lake County, Illinois. So it sets up this very difficult artifice for the city to manage and work its way through while we in appropriate way maintain the qualities of our community. And that short sentence says a lot. There's a lot of hard work to take place on this, and we will be meeting here very shortly for a very thorough review of all this in public meeting. Any particular comments, questions? This is all in train with what we've been doing during the last several months, getting ready for the budget. We're all on notice from the state that these are going to be very challenging and difficult times to sustain our qualities, as I say. But one thing we've got in Lake Forest is a lot of able people, both in the staff and our boards and commissions and on City Council, and the financial strength to manage this in an appropriate way that is fair to all, certainly intergenerationally, and also kind of smoothes the impact. So that, those are the broad goals we have. So, thank you very much. Now, if there are no questions...
We have one more slide.
Okay, one more slide. Oh.
One more slide.
Do that now?
Yeah.
Wow.
I'm going to pass it, there's some paper company, so I'm going to pass this down. It's probably hard to read, so you can see it there. But last week, we were meeting with the City Manager and the Director and the Mayor, talking about what is going to be required in this upcoming budget season. And in that conversation, there clearly were a lot of unknowns and challenges. So after that discussion, I put together this slide to, it's sort of a precursor for our conversation next week at the workshop. So there's, we don't have to talk about it, it's kind of a homework assignment for everyone, but up on the top is the revenue risks that we perceive. And on the left-hand side are the direct risks that we see. And Rob just mentioned the potential property tax freeze, which appears to be in the works for a two-year property tax freeze, which is going to complicate our life quite a bit. And the reduced uncertain state revenue stream is also a threat to us. So it's something that we're going to have to be thinking about as we work through the revenue discussions next week. On the right-hand side, with the federal tax law changes, there's some indirect revenue challenges. The property tax freeze for the Lake Forest schools is obviously going to be difficult, but if the federal tax deductions change for interest, mortgage interest, property taxes, and state and local government taxes, it's going to put an extra burden on our taxpayers where they're going to perhaps be spending more for federal taxes and not real happy about spending money on local taxes. So we'll see how that plays out. We have a ways to go. On the expenditure side, the risks that we saw were obviously the pension. And Tim and I, as part of that little subcommittee, will give you a recommendation early next year on some thoughts that we believe are very viable for slightly increasing the pension obligations that will be, but evening the amount, and we talked about that before, getting a flat level expenditure load well out into the future and getting us to 80% funding. So we'll talk about that in more detail later in the year before we finalize the budget. And the other one is potentially, and we've talked about this a little bit, but the potential for using our reserves to smooth some of these issues that we're facing with the property tax and the expenditure issues that we're having and the uncertain state revenue sharing. Can we use reserves to smooth that over some reasonable period of time? So it's a discussion for us. And then on the right-hand side, we've talked about it a little bit, but in this environment, capital projects and infrastructure are often the first to go. And can we really afford to do that? Do we have unfunded infrastructure needs that need to be attended to? And maybe we need to think about debt as a way to do that. So that's a further discussion point for next week. So this is just a way of kind of teeing up issues that need to be discussed and thought about and debated. So take it back with you and give it some thought, and we'll start again on Monday next week. Elizabeth, any comments?
Yep, that's great.
Okay. Well, thank you. With that opportunity for public comment, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back and ask for a motion to approve a determination of an estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2017 calendar year and establishment of December 4, 2017, is a public hearing date if required in accordance with the Truth in Taxation statute. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to step forward? Seeing none, move to item number five, items for omnibus vote consideration. We have seven items tonight. First is approval of the October 16, 2017 City Council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the check register for the period September 23 to October 27, 2017. Third is approval of a contract with direct response resources for vehicle, pet, and parking licenses and permits. Fourth, approval of resolutions authorizing the submission of grant applications between the City of Lake Forest and the Illinois Department of Transportation for grant funding through the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. Fifth, consideration of a resolution ratifying the execution of a stormwater and landscaping easement agreement with the Catholic Bishop of Chicago for work in the ravine between Lake Forest Cemetery and St. Mary's Cemetery. Sixth is a ward of bid for Lake Forest Cemetery Ravine Restoration Project. Seventh, approval of a contract for corrective work for the Everett Park Path Replacement Project. As we've done before, any item can be removed and taken separately if there's a motion to do so. Any particular points of clarification or question?
Can I just ask a question about number seven? And I guess, Mike, this would be for you. How often does something like this happen, where we have a contract, some of it's okay, but some of it's not? I don't see Bob, but, oh, Bob's here. I don't remember ever seeing anything quite like this before.
It does not happen. It hasn't happened. It's very interesting, as I spoke about J.J. Henderson and our water plant doing a very good job, South Beach Access Road, Lake County Grading, and the contractor Dunlop Bay at Ferry Hall Bridge. All three of them hit it out of the ballpark. They've all done a wonderful job. They're all low bid, but they did a great job. This is an instance of low bid that they did not do a good job. And we have noted that at the staff level, so next time we bid a project, they may be low bid, but we may be coming to you and not recommending them. So we have contractors in that area, but this one did not do a good job, and we've got to get it fixed and fix soon.
Although some of it was okay.
The base work, they excavated, and the stonework that they put in was fine.
Okay.
And they compacted it to the correct compaction, but the asphalt work was not done well at all. The path is not good, the basketball court isn't good. So Baker's going to be closing here in the next couple of weeks. We really need them to get that stuff torn out and a new path down.
And it's still coming in at the same number, it sounds like?
It is, it is. We've worked with the city attorney, so essentially the amount, we have not paid this contract or anything. And we will pay them for the work that is acceptable, the excavation of the old path and the stone, they'll be paid for that, but that is it.
Mike, while you're up there, I had a few questions about this pedestrian bridge replacement project down the McClory Bike Path.
Okay.
The grant application for that. First of all, thanks for these grant applications. I think it's a great way to find additional funding, and I'm all in favor of them. My concern was with the estimated project cost on these bridges. Are we thinking that they're going to cost, what, $800,000 to, are we completely replacing those bridges? What's the project?
The bridges would be completely replaced, but I'm going to have to ask Bob Els. Bob was the one that worked on this application. We had actually, on both bridges, done some repair work over the past couple of years, but they definitely, as they had been reviewed by Voice Janney, they need to be replaced. We've got to get them on a schedule to get them replaced, and this is a grant opportunity to be able to address that, so.
Good evening. Yes, that would be complete replacement. There's a lot of deterioration to the steel on both of those bridges. We did some repair work, I believe about two or three years ago on both of the bridges. But as Michael said, our structural engineer consultant recommended then to look at replacing in about five years.
Well, my question, having, you know, been somewhat involved with the new bridge out at the Middle Fork, was on this estimate of $800,000. I happen to know from insider information from someone on the county that that bridge, originally they had an estimate of about $800,000 for one bridge. And they, if one of the reasons it took so long was because they couldn't get an actual bid for less than 1.1 or 2 million.
Right.
Eventually, the total project came in at 1.3 million, and that was for one bridge. So, you know, I just would check, and since the city, if we accept this grant, and I know we get to look at it if we get the grant, but I just would be a little cautious because if we accept it, we're on the line to come up with, what?
20%.
20% of that. So I would just, just ask to double-check that $800,000 number, because you're talking about two bridges at $800,000. It just seems low.
But that's a total for both bridges.
Yeah, I know. You don't think it's high?
That's for two bridges.
I know, I don't think it's nearly high enough.
Yeah, I think the other, you would know the span, but I think if you take a look at the Illinois span and the Woodland brand...
The Middle Fork span?
It's still shorter than what the span was that has to go over the metro railroad tracks. That was rather long, lengthy, and I think that's why it was a specialty bridge. But we can certainly talk to our consultants.
Yeah, I just would double-check it, having, you know, knowing, I mean, that's why that project took as long as it did, because their staff told them it would be about $800,000, and that's not where it wound up. And if we're talking about two bridges, it's going to be potentially more than that. So I would just get some, you know, realistic figures for what that actual cost might be for those. That's my concern.
Sure.
The northerly of those two bridges, the one that goes over, I guess, Woodland?
Yes, sir.
Is, what's the particular deterioration on that?
It's some of the structural members up underneath the bridge deck on there.
Where the concrete is?
Yeah, below that, it's the structural steel, the weathering steel that's on there. A lot of it is due to corrosion from moisture and from salt applications that were done for many years on the bridges over the winter.
Yeah, so, how will that be ameliorated going forward? Because that bridge itself could stay there for 100 years, the rest of it, except for this deck structure, you're saying?
The steel underneath the deck, yeah. It's the structural web members that are having the problem right now. The actual metal is basically rusting.
Right, so is the plan to then just cut the deck out and leave the bridge, or you're putting entirely new structure?
Entirely new. It's the structure itself, it's the bridge itself, which is, as you can see, it's, neither of those bridges are painted. The type of material is called weathering steel.
Yeah.
And basically, in good conditions, it has that rusty look, but what it does is it just rusts a little bit, and it protects itself, but because of all the salt, all the corrosion, that didn't hold up. So the prices that we looked at were for actually regular steel that would be painted. That was what was recommended from the bridge expert, to use a, just go with a painted, regular Corten steel bridge.
With, with a concrete deck?
A wooden deck.
A wooden deck, okay.
Yeah, that'll bring the price down substantially.
Is this going to look like the Middle Fork Bridge then, structurally?
Very close, yeah. It won't have the chain link fence around it, but yeah.
Yeah, so it's the same type of bridge, though. It won't look, so, it won't look at all like the current bridges that we have there.
Well, there's different styles. We haven't gotten that far in it yet, but...
Actually, my number may be very low for that county bridge. Mine even cost quite a bit more than that, I think. But I don't have the actual figure in front of me, but, yeah. So just double-check the number, thank you.
Thank you.
Reg, you have a thought?
Yes, not on that subject, but it was the item three, which is the new contract we're looking to have with Direct Response Resources for permits and fees. Is there anything in the change to the new contract that the residents will see in the, you know, requests that go out and the processing of those requests?
They will look slightly different, and the online application will be a change. But what we have done in conversations with Direct Response Resource and through the demonstration is try to make it as similar as the current online process. We sell about 70% of our vehicle stickers online, and that is very, very efficient.
And you're encouraging that, obviously.
And the last thing we wanted to do is, is go backwards. So we did want to make sure, we did see a demonstration of their online system and felt that it was similar enough, while it's a different look and feel, the process is very similar.
Yeah, one reason I ask the question is if there was some dissimilarity to the citizen, maybe we should be giving them an advance notice to maybe help the process go as smoothly as possible. But if we're trying to make it as seamless as possible, maybe that would be counterproductive too.
Yes, and we will do a public outreach regarding, in the dialogue, and try to make that as seamless as possible in the transition.
And in the contract, there was reference that it's a one-year term, but there's an option to renew for five years, and it wasn't cleared, at least to me, in the language. Who has that option? Do they have an option to renew for five years, or the city option?
It's based solely on the city's comfort level with the process.
And how do you define the fees and the costs in that five-year extension if there's an election to extend?
We have not seen a standard contract from them, but we would try to make that similar to other contracts where it's something like CPI, there's some measurable adjustment that takes place.
Okay, but do you think they're receptive to the idea of having us have the five-year option?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any others? Seeing none, I ask for a motion to approve the omnibus agenda of seven items.
So moved.
Second.
It's a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item of business is ordinances, of which there are none for this evening, seven new business. There's none on the agenda. Additional items for council discussion, number eight, is executive session. There will be, I'm going to ask for a motion, go into executive session, but before I do that, I just want to note for the public that there will be no further business, regular council business following the executive session. So I'll ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Fifth Illinois LCS 120C5. The City Council will be discussing the consideration of land acquisition in Fifty or Five Illinois LCS 120C6. The City Council will be discussing the disposition of property and the consideration for the sale or lease of property owned by the public body. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.